So let us, um, let us start this meeting. And can we have a roll call vote to start? Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt here.
Oh, you're awful soft.
Oh, I'll work on that. Jonathan Schmidt here.
Okay, Maren?
Maren Goldstein here.
Lori?
Lori Garcia here.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle here.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry here.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham here.
And Cindy Kuzinski here. Okay, so this meeting is begun. And let me hit recording. So good evening and welcome to the September 1st, 2020, um, school committee meeting. Dr. Leclair, do you have any announcements?
I do. I have some, uh, school reopening updates that I'm going to give a little later on. But one thing that just came out today, so I want to share it with folks, is around the school lunch waiver. We had shared, I think in correspondence to families last week, maybe from the principals, that the waiver had been extended through, um, the first day of school, September 14th. But we found out today that the federal waiver was approved through December 31st now. That's just come out, um, so for those of you in other school districts, you may not ever heard that yet. So we'll be sending that out in correspondence to families, just to give them the update. But I didn't include that in my presentation later on, so I want to make sure people heard that first.
Wow, that's excellent.
Yeah, so that's the waiver that allows us to feed any child, zero to 18, in the community, which is what we've been doing since March. But we'll be able to continue to do that through the end of, um, the calendar year. So that's all I have for right now. The rest of my updates will be later on.
Excellent. Um, Marissa, do we have correspondence?
We do not have any correspondence.
Do we have gifts?
No.
Okay. All right, well, we are going to open this up to public speak. We're going to limit it to a half hour. Uh, and I'm going to ask that everybody take just two minutes. And if you have spoken already on the same subject and really aren't going to add anything new, um, why don't we just accept your previous statements, um, in the interest of time? So I am looking for hands right now. And... I am not seeing any. Up, here's Louise Jacob. Okay, Louise? Marissa, are you able to unmute? There you go.
There you go.
There I go. Um, give me one second, 'cause, okay, I, um, I'm just trying to find my notes, 'cause I know we're down to two minutes. Okay, sorry. Louise Jacob, Precinct 3, um, yeah. Um, and I know I've spoken about the SRO once before, but I just, um, finished listening to the recording of last meet, week's meeting, and I found it very upsetting. And I just want to make a few comments on that. You turned from two SRO outlets, and it just seemed to be, um, not quite what I hear from parents, from, okay. What I kept thinking mostly that was really upsetting is what about the children in all this? There were three teenagers who were arrested. It was only three years ago. We don't know what happened to them. And then we had two SROs. I, I mean, they were making presentations. And I think part of my concern is we can't tell youngsters to go public. But when you come back to this in October, I was just hoping that you would arrange presentations with BIPOC people, from adults who can speak from, from them. I know that Officer Rick said that, um, he couldn't understand why children of color might, um, feel uncomfortable with the school equity officer there. And I just like, there were so many reasons, and nothing to do with watching television. And I just feel could start with the fact that, oh God, I don't see the thing. It could start with the fact that he had been the arresting officer in a very difficult, um, confrontation. His predecessor, it was the predecessor's son, nobody mentioned that, who was raised in his house, who was the white protagonist that led on social media, that apparently, from what I've heard, led to the whole caucus and like, um, playground fight. Um, and, okay, um, so my, so my main thing is that there'd be some, not enough time to say everything, I think, from my personal experience, but it's that there would be some way to hear from people who could represent, who could speak from those people. And just one other thing, which is, I know you guys talked about bringing the school Equity Committee in on this, and I know you can't answer me, but, um, who's on the school Equity Committee? I've heard, I've talked to somebody, I've been to a few meetings, and they said that, like, it seemed to change every time. It seemed to involve a lot of staff. And, um, I'm throwing that out. In that case, obviously, they should be in on it, but somehow get some people who can make presentations on behalf of the kids, so that...
Okay.
I know you can't think that.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, Mindy Jenkins?
Hi, I won't take up too much time, because I did write a letter. But I just wanted to say that I find it ridiculous, at this point, that anyone could ask why BIPOC kids fear police. I find it even more ridiculous that it would be chalked up to simply watching too much TV. I think that's, that was highly offensive. It's clear to me that the people who are saying these things do not have black or brown family members, or even friends. They don't have people of color in their lives that they love and care about, and they are definitely not paying attention. But as for police asking kids of color to educate them on why they have fear surrounding police, that is truly a harmful thing to suggest. And saying it is evidence that proper education and training has not taken place, not to mention just, I guess, having human decency. Stop asking BIPOC people to educate you. And definitely, definitely, please, I am begging you, do not allow that burden to be put onto a child. Thank you.
Thank you. Lauren Daven? Daven?
My name is Lauren Daven. I'm from West Street. I'd like to commend this committee for reconsidering their initial unanimous, uninformed vote to file a waiver to eliminate the school resource officers. In the last week, I've heard from dozens of families who share my sentiments about the SRO positions, and are beyond upset that this committee tried to quickly remove them without due diligence. You are entrusted to represent our residents, and a vote of seven to zero is not reflective of this community whatsoever. That vote would lead us to believe that the overwhelming majority, if not all, of the families do not want a school resource officer, and I can assure you that is not accurate. This baseless vote is only reflective of your personal biases and not what is best for our students. Our taxpayers have been asked to pay more than $100 million to build a state-of-the-art educational facility. Our police department wasn't, was involved in the design process, and their input was valued to help create the safest school possible. However, just a few short months later, this same committee now wants to exclude the police from our school buildings. Which is it? Soon enough, nearly 1,700 students and teachers will be reporting to our schools every single day, and this group doesn't think an established police officer might be helpful. Acting out of public safety is, quite frankly, irresponsible and careless. Not to mention, it sends a message that we want our police to remain out of sight, until we need help, of course, but they are not welcome or wanted any other time. Believe me, I would love to live in a world where police officers are not needed, a place where there is no crime, no theft, no traffic jams, no medical emergencies, no school shootings, no lockdown drills, no fights, no drugs, no child abuse, and no car accidents. A world where our young people have more than enough advocates and role models, and are always well-adjusted, independent, and stable. But until then, I want my children to have access to our school resource officers and the opportunity to develop a relationship with them. East Hampton needs reasonable and rational. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's all I see. I'm going to scroll through. If anybody wants to speak, this is the time to let us know that. I am seeing no one. Marissa, do you see anybody? All right, so we are going to close public speak, and we are going to go on to, um, subcommittee reports. Do we have subcommittee reports? Maren, Shannon, yep? Shannon, do you want to go first?
Yeah, um, the policy committee met last week. Um, next week on the agenda, there's going to be about 30 policies that we need to go through. Um, we do have another meeting next week to finish up the changes for the school opening.
Okay, we'll be ready. All right, Maren?
Yep, we met, um, this week as well, uh, to discuss, uh, a variety of different topics around the finances and COVID-related items, um, just to sort of get a sense of where we stand currently. Looking back to FY20, um, we worked with the FEMA funding through the City Task Force, um, to be able to get around $140,000 of our, um, costs mailed. Those include meal delivery, technology, PPE, bus contracts, things like that, um, to be covered in last year's budget. This year's budget, um, that, that Task Force has not remet to start to review the funding usage of funds for FY21 yet, but that will, uh, happen eventually. And we've got, um, our business manager has sort of put together, business director has put together a list of items that could go into that listing. The other places for FY21 that we are, uh, pulling funds from, um, including a couple different, uh, SR grant and a CBRF grant from the Department of Education, um, combined, that's looking around, uh, $550,000. Some of that's already been spent on things like, um, uh, professional development stipends, presentations, and summer work, curriculum stipends, uh, some tutoring and translation fees, uh, virtual seats and licenses, um, some of the technology and devices that we needed for staff and preschool. So a number of those different places are, have been spent. Um, and then we are still working on, um, some of the additional funds that we know are going to be spending to, uh, improve our schools and the safety, uh, air filtration, air quality issues. So that's still sort of in the works. But a number of those things did get worked on, um, and discussed. We certainly are looking out to those costs. We will be having Colliers International come in and do a air quality review of our school buildings to be able to, um, get their feedback, uh, and get our sense of where we could put improvements. And then we'll be continuing to sort of have a conversation once we get that back, uh, because they'll be making recommendations that will obviously have costs, uh, into some of our buildings that, uh, we don't have long-term plans to be in for several more years. So, um, we're going to need to make some decisions around that and review that, uh, probably in the next month, and I'll be able to report back, um, from our committee once that happens.
Thank you. Jonathan, you don't have anything correct? Because they haven't met, right? And Lori?
We haven't met yet either.
Okay, all right. Okay, um, so on to our, um, I apologize, on to our, um, fall reopening plan and superintendent update.
Good evening, everyone. I have, um, some information to share out, but I'm going to go, um, in order on the, um, agenda, and the first up is special populations. And so I will turn it over to Sarah Mochek, who is our Director of Special Education. And Sarah, which we know special ed is not the only population that falls under special populations, but Sarah has provided some information for you tonight. So thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Dr. Leclair. Thank you, school committee members. I will share my screen, because I present, or created a PowerPoint to share. Now, how, it says host disabled participant screen sharing. So I have the button, but I, somehow, maybe it's, could be in your settings.
So Cindy, you're the organizer, so you might need to go down to your share button?
I did hit the share button.
How about if you go, you, if you, next to my name, there's sometimes, um, like three dots, and then you might be able to click?
Wait a minute, I got it. Hold on. How about this? Is it working now?
Yes, great. Good job. Thank you.
Had to push an unusual button, but we got it done.
Great. Can you see my screen? Oh, good. So I wanted to provide you tonight with an update on where we're at right now, and then, um, some additional information about, um, this special populations topic we talk about all the time. So, um, this, this, this Maya Angelou quote, I heard her say on the Oprah Show years ago. And I think, you know, in the spring, we were doing the best we can, right? We were the best we could. And now we know a lot more, we know a lot better, so we're going to do a lot better. I think we did as well as we could in the spring, um, but we've been given a lot more guidance and a lot more support, and we've had a lot more time to digest remote learning. So we'll certainly do a lot better this time around. So what's happening, um, with the Special Education Department over these couple of weeks of professional development? I met with, um, the entire Special Education faculty and staff on the first day of school to give updates and to provide additional, uh, new guidance from the Department of Education. Of course, like all teachers and, um, staff, people are attending, folks are attending, um, professional development. Special education teachers and related service providers are meeting as building teams and as specialist teams. I've met with, um, the speech and language team, and then another student support team already, uh, small group, some, some small group work. Student-specific teams are meeting to develop COVID-19 special education learning plans. There'll be a slide a little bit later on what that is. Um, our, our two special education coordinators are providing guidance to new staff and are assisting with student-specific planning. And then principals are reviewing student needs and reassigning paras as necessary. So some of our, um, programs are, um, have a significant number of paraeducators, which we don't need now that we are, um, doing some remote, or we are in a remote model. So we're looking at reassigning paraeducators to support students in different ways. I also want to let you know that this week I've submitted to the superintendent, and I believe that she has shared with our, with the East Hampton Education Association, proposals to conduct services outside, beginning on, I hope, on the 14th of September. They were reviewed by our district nurse and our school physician. These are similar to the, the protocols that were proposed when we wanted to do evaluations in August, but they've been updated to take into consideration some of the, um, additional requests. So we are, hope, so there are protocols, um, five different protocols. One for preschool evaluations, one for K to 12 evaluations, both of those are related to special education. Kindergarten screening, which is for all students. Occupational and physical therapy, um, which are very difficult to do remotely. The OT and PT are really hoping that they can be working in person with students outside. And then one-to-one instruction, including speech and language therapy for students in our RISE and SOAR programs. These, um, the students in RISE and SOAR, I would say, are the most vulnerable students, um, in our district, who have the most difficulty with remote learning. These, they're both, um, programs that support students with, um, significant autism, who, whose disabilities, um, prevent them from accessing general education without significant, um, supports and services. So we are, and, and I've heard from a couple of families, um, in these programs, and they, and I actually thought one was going to come and speak tonight, but they are begging for in-person services. Their children, you know, their children, particularly our preschool students in the RISE program, are at a crucial age, um, where they're developing language skills and behavioral regulation. And they've been without in-person support since March. And they, um, remote learning just, um, it's really, really, really difficult. So, um, we've submitted proposals to do all of this outside. Probably have to buy some more canopies, but I'll maybe take a, right over to Dick's Sporting Goods and buy some myself. So, um, uh, the Department of Education is requiring that, um, all districts, um, develop a COVID-19 special education learning plan for each student with an IEP. This takes the, um, IEP and translates it to, um, how services will be delivered remotely. So teams are, um, underway, working these, um, working out these plans. Families will be contacted to collaborate, um, and to, um, for, uh, staff to get some more information about what might work best for families. And the plans include, um, both synchronous and asynchronous learning. So both live, direct instruction and asynchronous learning, which can be on-demand. It could be an assignment, uh, the student is assigned to, um, uh, an online learning platform. One of the ones we're using is called Wizimo. It's a newer program that provides tutoring, um, and activities for students who need the Orton-Gillingham method of reading intervention. So that could be something you, that happens. Your child, the children will get all of their services, but they'll be, it'll be a combination of synchronous and asynchronous instruction. So remote special education services must include a regular and consistent schedule of classes, interventions, services, and therapies, as required in the IEP. And as I, as stated on the previous slide, it can be both synchronous and asynchronous. It wouldn't be solely one, though. It wouldn't, we wouldn't ever say that a child's reading services would be solely asynchronous. That, that wouldn't make sense at all. We wouldn't offer that anyway. We would do a combination with a pref, with, and I, you know, with a preference towards synchronous, synchronous instruction. Each plan that the parent receives will have a weekly schedule. So they'll say when things are happening. It'll have Zoom links. It'll be very explicit. Uh, and then there'll be frequent interactions with teachers and staff, and right on that sheet, it will be how and when, um, school staff will be communicating with families. Those plans are being worked, so right now, um, staff are working on contacting families, um, this week and next week, and we will have the final plans done by the 18th of September. That doesn't mean things won't start happening on the 14th, but these are very labor-intensive, so we wanted to, um, we want to have people be able to get working with students right on the 14th. So the plans, the written plans will be submitted a little later to parents. But they will come. So, uh, an update on conducting evaluations. So, um, completing evaluations is a, is an integral part of the special education process. We don't determine eligibility or, um, redetermine eligibility without, um, a comprehensive evaluation. We weren't able to do that in the spring due to schools being closed. However, as I said earlier, I've submitted, um, proposals to the superintendent for us to do this outside, at least while the weather is nice. I have a meeting Wednesday, oh, tomorrow morning, with a company called Presence Learning to learn about their, um, their online platform to conduct virtual evaluations. So they have a suite of, um, assessments that, some we already use, and they can, um, they have the ability to have their folks, their staff, conduct the evaluations, or they will train our staff to use their suite of, of assessments to conduct, um, evaluations. So I'm meeting, um, with them tomorrow morning. Fingers crossed that it will, um, be a good option for us. And I want to point out that it is still likely, um, likely necessary that we will have to conduct some in-person evaluations during the winter months. So, um, prior protocols, you know, um, will be revised and submitted to the superintendent. In-person evaluations are always preferred, uh, but, you know, we're learning how to do new things, um, given, given the situation we're in. So, um, on to special populations. Who are these students? So on the 9th of July, in guidance from the Department of Education, um, they, they said that they are urging us to prioritize in-person instruction for two particular groups of students with disabilities, our preschool students and students with significant and complex needs. So, um, they are calling, the Department of Education is calling these students high need students. We're, we're using the term special populations. So I, I can tell you that a lit, that's, that, um, uh, that, that term in blue, primary disability or level of need, PL3, it's a form, and it takes all of the services in the IEP and gives them a designation of low, moderate, or high. So what, what's below that is how you, um, end up in the high category. Lots, the, uh, most of your service services are provided outside of the general education classroom. The primary provider of the services is special education, and that, um, services constitute 75% or more of the students' day. So in East Hampton, those are our students, um, in our highly, um, specialized programs. The term we often, sometimes use is substantially separate programs, kind of an old term, but one that, one that has stuck around. So those are, um, programs that, where the students are educated primarily outside of the general education setting. We, we don't have too many of those. We're, we're pretty successful at providing inclusive supports, but the nature of some, some disabilities requires, um, very specialized instruction and staff. They're also, um, asking us to consider students who cannot engage in remote learning due to their disability-related needs. Students, students who primarily use aided or augmentative communication. Those, the students that we have in that category are in our specialized programs. Students who are homeless, students are in foster care or congregate care. And then this last one, students who are duly identified as English learners. So students who are English learners and have a disability, um, they are recommending that, um, we increase in-person instruction for these students. But we have a small number of students, um, who are English language learners, so I'm proposing that, um, we bring, we offer them all, 30-something of them, in-person instruction, um, in, as part of this special populations group. So the planning that we are doing, um, is, uh, so, uh, maybe last week or the week before, my wonderful administrative assistant, Anna Little, um, called or left message, uh, called, or attempted to reach all of the families in our specialized programs. She had to leave lots of messages. So we know that some people said yes, um, some people, that they would send their child to school on October 13th, should we be open for in-person learning. But we don't, I don't, we don't really have an accurate count, so, um, we'll repeat that exercise later in the month. And, uh, get really, and, and then find other ways to reach out to families if we can't, um, get a call, if we don't get a call back. I've been working with Dale Doran, Director of Business Services, on, um, procurement of PPE and Plexiglas dividers, lots of sizes and shapes to meet the needs of our students. We're working on the identification of necessary staff, which will include both special education teachers, general education teachers, paraeducators, and related service providers. Related service providers are, are speech, um, speech-language pathologists, occupational therapists, physical therapists, school adjustment counselors. So we're, um, you know, there's ongoing discussion of where the programs will be housed. And then health and safety protocols, um, are really still in the works, um, and we're bit, we're refining them, and they'll be submitted for review to our district nurse, our school physician, and of course, the city health agent prior to being submitted to the superintendent. And we're hoping to have all of this solidified, um, by the 22nd of September. So then it can be presented to the school committee. So I, I, so, um, Maren, I think, Maren, this is the information I had sent you prior, but here are the numbers of students involved. So the top, I hope it's not too small, but the top is, um, our special education programs, so that there are 56 students who would, um, be offered in-person learning as part of our specialized programs. We have currently six students who are homeless, who would be offered in-person, 10 students who are in foster care or in congregate learning, congregate care, and 36 EL, um, students. So 56 plus 52, that's 108 students. Um, and then, um, I didn't calculate staff, um, for the, um, for the programs. Um, and then, um, I didn't calculate staff, um, for the, um, for the programs, um, in the bottom section yet, because I, I just, I, you know, I need to work with, uh, with, um, probably Julian Levin or, or another, um, teacher around, um, figuring out how many staff we would need to support those, those programs. But you can see at the top, um, you know, I think we'll have need 19 teachers, nine teachers, 19 paras, and then an SLP, speech, language pathologist, an occupational therapy assistant, an occupational therapist, and a physical therapist. Our PT, um, is done through a contracted service. We have very little PT needs in the district. I'll consent, I will send all of this, um, to the school committee as well after. Um, so additional factors, um, to consider for in-person learning for special populations, you know, what's, what our, what our schedule will be? Will we be there all day? Will we be there half days? Will we be there every day of the week? Um, will we, will we serve lunch? How will we do, how will we, um, manage transportation? So all of these things, um, you know, are, are being thought about, um, and, you know, decisions to come later. We've really been focusing on getting the school year up and running, um, and, and thinking about special populations. But I'll be forming a, a group, um, to, to really dig into this a little bit more once, you know, once we're up and running after the 14th. So that's, that's all I have.
Any questions? Thank you, Sarah.
Can I just add one, one point that I think is important? I think, Sarah, thank you. I think that was excellent. And I, I know that parents are anxious to learn about plans for their children that have IEPs. And I just want to remind parents in the community that our teachers just returned to work last, um, Wednesday? Was it Wednesday? Feels like a blur already, but, you know, our teachers don't work all summer, so that is not their, um, their time to be doing that. So they're coming into work now. And in addition, they're doing professional development for probably half of their day and then the other half of their day right now is being spent, as Sarah said, on developing plans, reaching out to families, that sort of thing. So if you have not heard, um, about, you know, any changes or adjustments to your child's IEP plan, that doesn't mean that you're missing some information. It's to come. It will be coming. Um, you know, our teachers have just gotten back and they're, they're taking in a lot of information right now and processing a lot of information. So I think we need to be a little patient as they reach out to families. They're doing the best that they can. So I'll turn it back over to you now, Cindy, for questions.
Well, I just have a quick question along that line. Is there kind of a target date when parents will have that information? Do we have any sense?
Well, all, all parents will be contacted by next Friday at the very latest. Um, I know some teachers started calling parents yesterday and today. So, um, you know, we don't have a lot of information to share right now because those, it's very complicated to develop these plans and to develop schedules. You know, the people that, the staff that do like academic support services, that's a lot of what's in an IEP. So they have to go first. Then, then we usually do speech next and then OT. So it's, it's a, it's a tiered process. And of course, schedules are, are so different this year. And there's, you know, there's less time, given the way the schedules are working, um, to sort of fit everything in. So, um, but, but, but I've encouraged people, even if they have nothing to say to the parent or have no information, just to call and, or email, say, hi, you know, we're working on it, you know, your, your child is important to me. So I've been encouraging, encouraging staff to reach out to families.
Um, so definitely by, say, September 11th?
A hundred percent because school starts on the, on that, is that a Monday, the 14th? Or the Tuesday? Yeah. So, so the parents will need all the information by that, by the, by the fourth, by the 11th, so they can help their child.
So they'll have their schedule.
Yep. They may not have the written plan by then.
But they'll understand.
Have the information, yep.
Okay.
And what to do.
All right. That's good. Um, and can, um, Dr. Leclerc, can that kind of go out in your updates, just that all parents will have heard and, you know, feel more informed by the 11th, so they have a due date? And then if we get in touch with them earlier, that'll just be a bonus for all those who might hear a little earlier?
I plan to send this, I do, I, I've been sending a special education email out, like middle of the week, you know, past couple of weeks, or I've maybe done two. So I have one that's, that's scheduled to go out tomorrow. It's sort of a frequently asked questions style document. Um, so I can put that in there as well. Um, but that only goes to special education families.
Yep. That's fine.
And then.
But that will be very helpful. That'll make people feel better. Um, does anybody have any questions? Then we will go on.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you.
Oh, you're welcome, Shannon. My, my pleasure. You're very welcome. My pleasure.
Thank you. Um, okay. I am going to attempt to share my screen now. Okay. So let me start at the beginning. So I just wanted to provide a few updates. We had such a late meeting last week that we didn't go into too much detail. I know you get the, um, the updates every week from me, but just to give you a, a few specifics. So, uh, for those of you that don't know, as I've just mentioned, we are in the midst of professional development that has started across the district. Um, I want to be clear, administrators are in the buildings. Staff are welcome in the buildings, but are not required. And, um, staff have been in the buildings. I've, um, I was over at Maple today. I was at Whitebrook and staff were not in Whitebrook today, but it was because it was voting. But I was there last Wednesday and probably half the parking lot was filled. So staff are going into the buildings, um, and going into their classrooms primarily by themselves. Uh, custodians are, uh, continuing to do their regular duties, but I also want to make clear that they're also completing a lot of the safety precautions that we want to have in place. Uh, the Plexiglas will be installed in all the main offices by the end of the week. Now, I know people might be thinking, you're not letting the public in the buildings? Why do you need Plexiglas? Well, if I'm walking into the building, or if a teacher is going to the office and has a question, we still want the Plexiglas barriers. We want there to be Plexiglas to make the, the office staff feel comfortable and safe. Central office staff is working at 50 pacens. So if people need to reach us, we are open for business. So, I mean, that's not to say we're open for the public to walk in, but you can certainly reach out by email or phone call and you should be able to get the party that you're trying to reach. Um, we have drop boxes set up at not only 50 pacing, um, which is the main Dropbox for the, the city hall, but we've also replicated that we have boxes at all of the school buildings. So if families need to drop off information or pick up information, we have boxes outside of all our, um, offices, our, our buildings, so that people do not need to come into the buildings. And I wanted to give you a little bit of an update on technology, because as you know, this is a moving target. So I think as Marin mentioned, mentioned, we've embarked on a one-on-one Chromebook program for students. And we're grateful that the city, um, allowed us to access, uh, CARES funds back in, um, late spring that helped us really kick that off. Um, we've made several technology decisions because of feedback from last spring from families and teachers that, uh, commented when we went out, you know, and we, we, we were working on doing so many things, uh, just to keep our head above water. And now that we've had time to review and debrief, uh, the technology planning committee, uh, worked all summer and we have selected Google Classroom as our online learning platform for grades pre-K through eight. That's exclusively. So if you have a third grader and an eighth grader, they should both be using Google Classroom. So there will be that commonality for parents to kind of, you know, understand what's going on. Grades nine through 12 will also be using Google Classroom, but they will have the added option of using a tool called Moodle, which is a little bit more advanced than Google Classroom or a little bit different. Um, and we've chosen the Remind app for all grades. Uh, I think last year we had several different tools. Remind was being used by teachers, Seesaw. Again, if you had children in multiple buildings, it could get a little bit confusing if you weren't savvy with, uh, the work that they were doing. So we've kind of, uh, siphoned all that down. We've selected Remind and Zoom is our video conferencing program across the district. That will remain the same. So those are several of the technology decisions that have been made. And as you can imagine, professional development is being conducted to make sure that all teachers are very comfortable using all of those tools. So the technology that we have available, we have the investment from the CARES Act, which prioritized us purchasing approximately 600 Chromebooks over a course of time, um, that started, um, last spring. These Chromebooks would be specifically for students, but we've also been purchasing Chromebooks for our para educators. Those are our teacher assistants. And prior to the school closure, many para educators would not have their own Chromebook to use. They would use a classroom, um, machine. And so we've, um, purchased Chromebooks for the para educators. And several of our teachers needed new machines, so we've been purchasing some Chromebooks for our staff as well, particularly when we left in March. Many folks, um, went home and, and they had older laptops that didn't have webcams. So, you know, we've really tried to work hard to make sure that we don't have any of those obstacles any longer. So the Chromebook distribution is starting. Um, you will not necessarily get something from me. You will get something from the building principal. So Mr. Evans has sent something out to families at the high school. The distribution is happening from the high school gym. It's starting this week and I believe they will also have, uh, Chromebooks available next week as well. Um, and next week will be the middle school can pick up Chromebooks and that information has gone out from Meredith, um, from Mrs. Belize to families. Uh, the pickup is at the high school, just for ease. We have one computer technician that's located there. And so he can distribute, if it's a high school student or a middle school student, it just makes it a little easier. And what I would say is that if you have not heard from your building administrator, please reach out to your building administrator. That's middle school and high school, because I know those emails went out. I saw them, um, this past week. So if you are not getting your emails, perhaps you blocked an email address or it's in your spam or your junk mail. So please make sure you're getting messages from your building administrator. And don't just show up to pick up a Chromebook. There are scheduled times so that we can keep the numbers of people very small. Um, and there are also, um, additional times, like in evenings for families that work, that sort of thing, that they will work with you, but you need to reach out if you can't make the, um, the time that's been assigned to you. Uh, the elementary school distribution will begin the week of the 14th. So we are finishing up, as I've said in some of my previous logistical updates, those Chromebooks, there was a set of Chromebooks, a, a large group of Chromebooks, I forget how many, um, that were turned around at the border in almost every district in the state of Massachusetts. So it's not, please don't think that we didn't do our due diligence and order things when we should have. This was a, a universal problem. And I have been told by, um, Ashley Barstow that he's received confirmation from the company that the Chromebooks are being shipped this week and we should have them early next week. And they will be working next week to get them all set up and turned around to go out on the, beginning on the 14th. Those distributions will probably happen at the elementary schools. I'm not 100% sure. But, uh, on the off chance that there's some weather catastrophe over Labor Day weekend or something and the shipment gets delayed by a day or two, you know, I just don't want to say absolutely for sure that you'll have them on the 14th, but they're very, we're very optimistic. And, um, I, I think Ashley Barstow will, um, ensure that his team really prioritizes getting these Chromebooks all set. Um, I don't think that, you know, the focus will be on grades one, two, three and four. For pre-K and K, we still need to screen those students. They are not going to be diving right in to school on the 14th. So if you have a preschooler or a kindergartner and you want technology, hold off just a little bit. You, you need to go to screening first and then they'll give you all the information that you need. Uh, hotspots. Ashley asked me just to remind people in the community, we have purchased hotspots, but we want to make sure that hotspots, um, people know what hotspots are. They're not to fix performance issues. They're not a booster at your home if you have a weak signal. So I don't want people to, to think that they can get this and it's going to make their weak signal better. It's not. Um, they are slow, um, and they should be used as a last resort, but they are for those people in the town, in the city of East Hampton that are without any internet access, families that can't afford it, or families that only have cell service and they need to offload some school data from their plans to avoid things like overages. So if you fall into that last category, that last bullet, please reach out to my office or reach out to the IT department and let us know that you need a hotspot and we will take care of that for you. We have them in and they're available. Uh, and finally, well, I think this is, well, it's almost final, but tents. I wanted to have, uh, I wanted to circle back to tents. It was mentioned in Sarah's presentation, so I'll talk a little bit about it. Um, and then I want to put it to the committee because I really think that, uh, we need to have some kind of motion tonight, whether we're moving forward with tents or not. So tents, we would consider using tents, and this is just a sample of things that we could use tents for. You heard Sarah mention pre-K and K assessments. We have small tents that we've already purchased for other reasons in the district over the years that are ready to be put up for that. We don't need to buy anything. For special needs, student evaluations and services, you know, OT, PT, those are one-on-one small group. You can use a little pop-up tent to do things like that with, you know, one child and one teacher. Uh, career counseling, college application sessions with counselors, small group instruction activities, PE in band staging area. What I mean for that is, um, you know, if band wants to do some instrument practice, which is not allowed in the building, they could maybe meet there and then, you know, go to a larger area, say in this high school parking lot or something in socially distance, depending on how many students showed up. If we had 30 students, we wouldn't put them all under the tent squished together. But, you know, they could do something like that. PE might meet there and then go for a walk in the park kind of thing. So that could be a staging area where parents could drop off and pick up students. But there's the other side of this and there's a cost. So the cost for the tents, four large tents, this would be in addition to the small ones we already have. And remember, I'm going back a few weeks, where we talked about possibly having one larger tent at Maple, one larger tent at Center Pepin, and two large tents at, um, the high school. And tents, canopies, you know, open on the sides. That will cost the districts, district approximately $10,000 to purchase those tents. That would come out of some of that money that Marin is telling you that we have secured or we've been allocated through grants. So before I make a $10,000 investment, I think this committee should weigh in. Uh, in addition to that, I've also mentioned to this committee, we would need a place to store these tents during the colder months when they have to come down. So these are just, um, pieces of info. So these are just pieces of information that I want to put out to you. And I think I just have one more slide, so I'll go to that and then we can open up the tent discussion. Air quality, kind of goes hand in hand, why we're not, why we're not venturing into the buildings right now. There are two parallel things that are going on in the, in the public schools right now. The town, the city is doing a review of the public buildings for air quality. And I think for energy efficiency, the mayor's on here, she could speak better to that than I can. But my understanding is they're still in the, the, the request for solicitation kind of phase. Again, the mayor knows more than I do on this. So that's one piece of what is going on. On the flip side, or in the parallel path, the school department is working with Colliers International, who is the project manager on our new building. And they have engineers and they provide a service called commissioning. They're commissioning agents, which is what public schools across the state of Massachusetts are doing to assess specifically air quality in their public schools. So we've signed a contract with Colliers to assess just our air quality in our buildings, not energy efficiency, which is a, something the mayor's side is doing. And we have, in addition to that, we have made an investment already. We've screened all the windows at Maple and all the screens are also going into center. They needed screens because not all the windows could open properly. And we know from most of the literature that we're reviewing that air circulation is essential. So we didn't want to have windows open without screens in them because then bees could get in and that sort of thing. So the screens, I was over at Maple today, the last of the screens were going up. We're purchasing box fans for windows. The Chan School of Public Health at Harvard did a massive study around air quality and made recommendations, and I can share that out with anyone. And the suggestion to improve air quality in buildings is to have windows open and put window fans in to, to improve circulation. So we've been purchasing those. I, I don't know that people realize, but we clean our HVAC systems every summer. We have a company come in, so they're can, you know, they're doing all the things that they need to do. And we'll be looking at the recommendations from Colliers and making any adjustments that we need to make and, and any other investments that we need to, to ensure that the quality of air in our buildings and the circulation is appropriate. So that's what I would say about air quality and that's it. So I'm happy to go back to the tent slide or I can, I can stop the share. Why don't I do that? And the one last thing, I'll preface this by, by saying, you know, the, the tent discussion is, I think, excuse me. The other thing we have to keep in mind is we're still in the midst of negotiating with our teachers. And I don't currently have people that are going to come in and provide services in tents. That's a negotiation point. So that has not been decided yet. We're working on that and I'm, I'm hoping it will come to fruition. But that's another factor in deciding to invest this money. So I open it to the committee for you.
Lori? I have to say that at this late date, we are at September 1st, the fact that we are still discussing this, that we haven't put it to a vote, I thought it was decided that we could secure tents. To hear our director of special services say she will go to Dick's if she needs to, I really find that pathetic because we need to have a way to service our students. I mentioned other districts that already tried to get tents and they were unable to. I mentioned all the kindergarten students that would love to be able to meet their teachers. I know that we haven't gone to negotiations for this with our teachers. And one of the reasons is because we have not decided. I thought that we did decide. So I would like to move that we vote on this immediately to secure tents for our district to provide the necessary services that we should, including the bands, all the, all the things that we've already discussed. I, I don't need to get into it again, but we should open it up to discussion and get this done.
Right. I also have a piggyback question. I, I too thought this was decided. And the matter was, I believe the last few times we talked, Dale had pop-up tents and four large tents. And I thought I was encouraging getting more because I think we can fit more on the property. So I'm just confused. I thought Dale had already gotten those four. And it's sounding like you want to vote because we didn't get them. And I am concerned because waiting this long, we may not get them. I know a lot of schools has, have scooped them up. So.
So we have, so we have the small ones. We have the small pop-up tents. We have six of those. And we already own those, we already possess those.
Right.
We didn't have to go buy, we didn't have to go buy those. The four that we're looking at, Dale does have a vendor. She has priced them out. They are in stock. We're ready to go. And so Dale has asked, she asked me last week, can I have the go-ahead to spend the $10,000? And I said, well, I want to make sure the school committee is on board because I've heard, I, I've heard different, different opinions from people. So that's why I came back to you. Before I make a $10,000 purchase out of the, you know, grant funds, I want to make sure that you are fine with that. Plus, probably a little bit more than 10,000 in full transparency because we need the storage container to store them in.
Right.
So if you want to take a vote, we can get them, we can purchase them. There, we have access to them and that can happen.
Anybody want to talk? Jonathan?
I'm all that Marin's raising his hands.
So I would just mention that I know, in terms of the storage side of this, I know that we're already looking at the possibility of some other different storage units, potentially for Whitebrook materials and things like that. So I think that we should really have two separate conversations. I think that this is really more about tents and we can table the storage piece of that until later and we determine whether pieces fall in place with storage. But I certainly agree. I think that we've all sort of already talked about this. I don't think that we need to micromanage the spending of our budget. And I think that we've already agreed that we want the tents, these, the, these four tents available for use. And I don't know how much more conversation we need to have. I think we're in that direction. So, but I'll hand it over to Jonathan.
My question was indeed going to be around just thoughts on what we were looking at for storage. So in respect to people's time, I can certainly hold off on that discussion. But if you had Dr. Leclerc, anything specific in mind, I'd welcome to hear it. But I certainly understand if that has not been.
No, it hasn't been. Cindy mentioned something about a storage that they, so she could probably send me that information. It's obviously not something we need on day one.
Right.
Because we're going to put them up and they're going to stay up until the cold weather comes in. So as long as, as long as we get them, you know, in time for that, we'll be fine. So I'm going to go ahead, I'm, I'm hearing, I'm going to go ahead and have Dale, direct Dale to purchase the four tents. So we'll, we'll get going on that.
I mean, personally, I'm just going to say it again. I would love to see six because I think there's room for two more. But I'm at least happy with the four and I absolutely want those four. And if you need us to vote, we'll have a vote, but.
No, I don't need you to vote. And I think, I think my only hesitancy with the six, and, and this is what I would say, Cindy, I think we can always add more. You know, if we feel, if, if there's a need, if people are clamoring to use them, we'll absolutely add more. But I would still like to leave some of that high school parking lot for staff that are accessing the building. We are going to be doing fall sports, so cars, you know, we need a parking lot. So I'm, I'm hesitant to give up too much room.
So as, just so you know, I'll reiterate again. Last meeting, I, I had mentioned that my husband and I walked to the areas and measured out 30 by 30. So I am more than willing to go with anyone and go to each site and show you where I thought we could fit more. So I'm still up for that and very invested in it. The other thing about extra ones, and I agree, as long as they have them and we're going to be able to do it, I think they're going to catch on. And then I think in the spring, we're going to find that we're going to want more tents. So that's why I was trying to have us maximize the amount of space that we could use now, hold on to them, and then we have them, we're up and running for the spring. But anytime you want me to walk with you or anybody else to figure out how many tents all total we can get, I would love to do that. So anybody else want to say anything? She doesn't need to vote, so we can just go ahead. We're good?
And I'm all set. Thank you.
All right. Any comments about technology, hotspots? Shannon?
Okay, I actually have a couple. I, I've been writing down notes here.
Yep.
So Allison, you're talking to people that are watching about hotspots. They can't hear you.
Well, if they have their cellphone and they're using, they're, they're using, you know, they're using data on their phone. So that's what I'm saying. Or if people are listening and they have a neighbor or someone, they know someone in the community that doesn't have internet access, it would be helpful for us to know that.
Yeah. Is there a way for you to put that out in your message to parents that if anybody is needing a hotspot, information about it, that they can just call?
Mm-hmm, yes.
In regards to the emails that you were just bringing up, Cynthia, is there any way that we can ask the administrators to copy us on the emails?
Copy you?
Families? The only reason I'm asking is because people ask questions and I don't know the, you know what I mean? Like I, I have no idea what's happening, like at Center Pepin. You know what I mean? I just feel like it would be easier.
I can, it will, it will, yeah, you'll get a lot of emails, but I can do that.
That's fine. I've been getting a lot of emails. It's okay.
Jonathan?
I was just going to chime in on that last thought regarding, I, I thought that was a really valuable point that if anybody's listening who doesn't need a hotspot themselves, but is aware of a friend or neighbor or someone who is, please, you know, pass that message along as well. I think that's a really valuable point and that we could rely on folks to help us spread the word.
Thank you.
Lori? And going along with that, with technology, there are so many people that don't understand the basics and we've discussed that before. And that's something a tent we could have as a technological question place. Because people, if they're going to be writing to tech support, they already know the basics, whereas there are people that don't even know those basics. So it would be great to open that learning center, whether it be under a tent or in the high school, to provide tech support from day one of the learning for students.
I think, I think we could definitely do some trainings in the tents. I think that we already, and if I push out the emails from the building principals in the last few weeks, they've communicated to families that there will be training opportunities for parents to learn how to use these tools. And they've already, you know, they've already set them up. So that, that will be information that you can have. But to Lori's point, some people might actually need to come in and sit down and have someone walk them through a little bit more than just, you know, once you get into the actual Zoom session or the Google Classroom. So I think we can definitely have some drop-in kind of center hours for people.
Yeah, that was my next question is if that was possible. Because it is, they're learning a new program. And it's really important if we're asking them to support their kids that they have that chance to feel a little more comfortable with it. Shannon?
I'm sorry, I wasn't done. I still had other stuff. So Allison, the other question that I had for you is, I was on the website and I noticed that we haven't put the calendar up for the year. We approved that, what, three weeks ago? Just some people are asking questions.
Yeah, no, you're, good point, good point.
The other thing is.
There might be a Sue Colby question. I think, I think Sue normally sends that along to IT. So I'll double check with Sue tomorrow.
Okay, and I know there's a generic schedule for basically every school. Is there any way to get those posted? Just the generics, like the plan?
Yep.
I haven't, it seems like the website hasn't been updated in months.
Are you looking under the school reopening tab? That's where everything is.
It's all under there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so the, for example.
I didn't even know that was a tab, I'm sorry.
It's, it's not a tab, it's a big bar at the top.
I didn't realize I could click on it.
Yes, yes. And so the, for example, the elementary school did a parent forum last week. All three elementaries did a parent forum last week. They had a PowerPoint presentation that had the schedule in it. Everything was in it. The recording is there, the PowerPoint is there. So if you click on that, Shannon, you should be able to find just about everything. All the recordings for every parent forum. Yep.
I don't know if there's a way to make it more clear and obvious that, you know, this is where all the information is. You know, like it just said, school opening. And then I thought it was just the information that was underneath it.
Oh, okay.
The way that it looks on the website. And there wasn't.
Shannon, that's a, that's a great point. I mean, it should say, click here to find out more about, and then people know to click there.
Yeah. So it's a great point. The last question I have is for Madam Mayor, if I can. May I? And am I allowed?
Yeah.
Okay. Can you clarify the buildings being closed till December 31st?
Sure. And I know a lot of people are. Yeah, the, the buildings, the extension of the order to December 31st is really the extension of the original order, which is outside the Board of Health and any department, but goes to the building operations themselves and some kind of a statement or verification that the HVAC systems in each buildings can be retrofitted to suppress, if not eliminate, the transmission and subsequent infection of those inside the building of COVID-19. So we have an RFQ out that we're building to go through all the city buildings to take a specific look at that. It's not something that's going to look at energy efficiency because most of our buildings that will remain standing have already had that review through MassSave and Maple, Center Pepin, and Whitebrook. While we might be able to do a little something where, you know, those buildings, if all goes well, will be obsolete in 16 months. So if we get, and, and we expect to get this out to bid on comms buy in the next week, when we award the bid, we would expect that each individual building will, will get a certificate and the renovation, it won't be, we don't have to wait for all. So it's possible, you know, a retrofitting to Maple Street School to, you know, can start and we have that letter and it's, it's more, you know, hybrid or in-person learning. I think working with the existing occupancy guidelines that, that we've got in force, buildings like City Hall, and looking at special population and numbers and keeping the people, the number of people in the buildings very, very low is, is maybe, maybe an option because it wouldn't stress the air circulation systems in those buildings now or in the case of buildings that actually have windows that open with screens. You know, maybe we can work around that for, for testing and whatnot. Does that help?
If I could follow up on that, Shannon, if you're done with your questions?
I actually am, thank you very much.
So Madam Mayor, if I can just follow up on that. I mean, one of the questions that I have is that, as far as I understand, particularly like, say, the high school, we are. particularly like, say, the high school, we already know that the filtration system that is there for air quality is already exceeds what the state is asking for systems to be in place. So I guess just the blanket "schools are closed" to the public is confusing if we already know that the filtration system meets all expected sort of additional air quality requirements.
I, I, I will say, as respectfully as possible to the state, and being on their reopening committee, when I see the state stick to a guideline for more than three months around public health, then I will follow that. But until then, I'm not. And we're going to look at ionization and different filters that will exceed even what the state says. The state right now is saying that our kids and our teachers can go back into buildings where we still meet on Zoom. So, and it's respectful to the state. I understand. No one knows what's going on here. So I'm locking it down until I get something from the companies that are doing the cutting. When the companies that are doing circulation for hospitals say, "We're okay," or "This is what we can do," then I'll feel better. And, and I'm not, I'm, I'm not feeling better about any of our public buildings. Hopefully, we're all, you know what? I, I would love to spend the money we're going to spend on this, and at the end of it, the high school is fine. And Maple Street, I would love that. But until I get that in a paper, we can't get OSHA inspectors to come to our buildings right now to just, I, I had OSHA inspector do like unofficial walkthrough to give a building operation some tips or what their concern was, and, and it was really, they didn't even have proper standards for COVID-19. And again, it's not disrespecting of any of these agencies. It's just the uniqueness of the situation. And so am I working off of anecdote, waiting for science? I am.
Okay, but we already have science in terms of air filtration for the expectations respected around the high school. And if we just approved volleyball to be played in the high school gym starting in the 14th?
You know what? I, I wouldn't have, I, I can't be more clear. In two years, when this is less, and everybody says I overreacted and spent tens of thousands of dollars on this, I will not care. I will say, "I have done my job."
Laurie?
I'm sorry. Kids are being sent home from colleges right now.
So Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, I'm sorry. Going back to what you just said then, so does that mean that volleyball cannot be played in the gym under a city order?
I would say no. I mean, I, 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 I'm not, I, I'm just stunned. I mean, kids at colleges around the country are getting suspended for, for a whole semester because of the transmission rate is so high, and they cannot keep their dorms clean enough fast enough. Never mind the frat parties. People are getting COVID-19 on planes, just sitting there, because the, the number of people in the planes. I mean, I, sure. And I also hope that what we see is a infection, a transmission and infection rate stays low and that the strain of virus or, you know, whatever it is, you know, just has people with mild symptoms. But, you know, I don't know. But I don't know. And we're working, I mean, look at our rates. They're so low right now, and because schools aren't open. Like, we don't even know what's going to happen with elections. Like, we're hoping, I mean, I think East Hampton did an amazing job for elections. Amazing. But let's remember, of the 4,900 ballots we mailed out, 3,911 as of this morning came back in the mail, because we gave people that option. I'm very worried about it.
So Superintendent, what do we do now? Do we have to? I will never say we take back a vote again, ever. But what do we do?
They can play outside. They've talked about that.
Yeah, you, you took a vote to approve fall sports, and that was one of the sports that you approved. I'm not sure, I, I'm, I'm not sure they can play games outside. I, I don't disagree with Shannon. They can probably practice outside, but official games? I'm not sure. I would need to follow up with the athletic director on that. And again, though, going to the mayor's order, there will be no spectators in the athletic event. And, you know, so it would be just that group of students and their coach and the official that would be in there, and then the other, the visiting team. And there would be, you know, one entrance, one exit, no locker rooms, you know, all the, all the things that we discussed last week.
And Dr. Leclerc, all of that was taken through by the Board of Health and reviewed and came back as approved?
Yes.
Correct?
Yes.
And I will, again, stress, my order is not through the Board of Health. It is not through the schools. It is, it is as the owner of public buildings in the city of East Hampton. And there is no way in my right mind I can sign off or look somebody in the face and say, "It is okay to go back into those buildings." I'm sorry. No. There are buildings that are newer than our high school, which have been the site of contamination, infection, transmission. I, you know.
Mayor, I don't feel you need to apologize. I personally thank you for your decisions.
Thank you. And I'm not, I mean, it's, yeah, I, I, I'm just, I would say I'm frustrated, but very honestly, I'm scared. I'm very scared. We can't go on our bike path without a mask, but we're talking about people coming into buildings that we have no certification that says on them COVID-19, it will mitigate the transmission. And the fact that we have science that says that our school from 2013 is okay just doesn't cut it for me. It just doesn't. And I know kids need to go in school, and I, I hear all of it. I, I do. I understand. You know, it's been a while since I've been in that place.
So you know I agree with us being remote. I also did not, I voted no for sports, because I am very concerned. But for clarification purposes, we had already said that we will not go hybrid until we all deem that it's safe. So that's way on the back burner. But in terms of special populations coming in, what we're putting under Remote Plus, are, are we looking at small enough numbers? Or are we feeling like we need more tents? Back to the tents, if we're outside in the open air for as long as we can while we're waiting for this clearance and these buildings to get evaluated? Again, I'm looking to give us some flexibility. So do you have a sense, Mayor, as to?
Certainly with the evaluation, yeah, the evaluation of the buildings, the schools will be first for, I think, obvious reasons. As far as smaller numbers and smaller groups, I, I, I think it's doable in buildings that have windows and, and great circulation or better than others for small periods of time. For services, I, I feel okay with that. I, I want to look at it more on what it looks like, you know, and, and talk to DLS and talk to, to OSHA about that. But, yeah, I mean, I, I want to. I mean, I also would ask, have the teachers agreed to go back into the building? And I'm sorry, I'm, I'm kind of like out of it from the last week. But are they agreeing to go back in? Has that been settled?
No, we're still, we're still in negotiations. Teachers right now are not required to go into the building. They are welcome in the building if they would like to access their room. And some of them are taking advantage of that, but we have not required it yet. And we're still in negotiation.
So again, I would toss out that tents, to me, are, are better solution right now as we wait for these evaluations.
And do you know what temperature it is outside?
I, I think for us, the challenge, and, and I am not a kindergarten teacher or a preschool teacher, so it's not my area of expertise. But I think the idea of having a, you know, group of three and four-year-olds or five-year-olds in tents, and, you know, if we're talking preschool is one of the special populations. To do preschool in a tent, in a parking lot, I think raises a lot of safety concerns for our staff. And so I'm not sure, you know, it may not be insurmountable, but it's definitely something that raises some red flags for me, and I see Sarah put her light back on.
Well, you know, so two things. Shannon, you talked about the temperature. It is not that cold outside right now. And the city of New York during tuberculosis taught all of their students for an entire year, straight through the winter, outside. They did it in pavilions and under tents. The kids bundled up, everybody, you know, it, it was a different time period. They could get within six feet of each other. But we are not talking about using tents in the winter. We're talking about the fall. We're talking about the spring. It is not that cold. And if everybody's prepared, then they, they would be fine. And we have an outdoor program in Hatfield where all year long, our preschool and kindergarten kids go out for a nature walk. And they all have these little suits that each person has their own little personalized suit, and they go out in this little wet suit, and they are out for an hour in those. We're talking about being creative, and I'm not saying it's a perfect solution. I never would. But this is an out-of-the-box time period in our life, and there are some really creative ideas that people have. And not all little kids would be able to go outside. I'm talking about cutting our numbers so that this is a doable plan, not that everybody would be under a tent and outside. I just know that there is resistance to go into the building. There is a need for kids to be educated. There is a parent want for kids to be educated. So the more creative we are, the better it is. Laurie?
And I, I also understand what you're saying about having a lot of preschoolers outside. It's never been my suggestion to have full classes with one or two adults outside under a tent. I also know the number of parents that have written and have begged for opportunities for their children to be able to meet their teachers face to face. I view it as something that could be like a field trip, where you have chaperones that come. And the parents who would really like to see this could be enlisted as the chaperones in the tent to make sure that everything is okay under the supervision of our teachers.
Mary?
So I think, I think we're just, I think we're talking, so when we talk about bringing students back in Remote Plus, our special populations, we are being tasked with educating in-person the most challenged students in our district. So I think that, I want to be clear that it's, it's not, for some families, they will choose to keep their children home. But I think that we're trying to problem-solve for the whole group of preschoolers that we are supposed to try to provide services for four days a week. So do I think we could have children flowing out from the classroom to the tent for a little nature walk or a little outdoor activity throughout the day? Yes, absolutely. Could we have half the class go out and half the class go in? Yes, absolutely. We could get creative in doing all kinds of things. But, but this population is a population that we're, we're not looking necessarily to just have, and I don't, I don't mean to say that you were intending this, Laurie. I'm just, I'm just talking out loud. You know, we want to provide them opportunities for full days of their, their instruction. So students in our Rise and Soar program, these again are students that we, you know, are, they're going to need a lot of support to go outside and be educated in a tent. It's not that it's impossible, but it may not be possible for an entire day, four days a week. So as long as we have the building and we can move, like, in and out, I think, fluidly or split the groups in half and, you know, be creative, I think there's a way we can, we can make it work. But I think we need both the building and the tent in order to be.
Absolutely. We weren't talking about one or, you know, only one solution. We're talking about just being as creative as possible and throwing as many different options as we can to address the needs of the kids. Mary?
Well, I guess this comes back again, Madam Mayor. You, your answer to whether or not we can have special populations utilizing our school buildings, I did not understand it as a yes or no answer. And I think, I mean, we've been doing this now for several months, trying to like define this as best as we can. And the new press release that came out on Friday kind of stopped all of that potentially. So I think it'd be really helpful for us to know from your decree, are you saying we can have special populations utilize our school buildings or not? Can we use the high school or not for those special populations?
I'm willing to talk about it with occupancy levels to help this situation. But, you know, as a broad rule, I'm not saying yes. And I'm sorry that it's not yes or no. I mean, if there's any time in history that we've been alive, like, it's gray.
So when is your RFQ process going to happen so that you'll have more information too?
To your point about a yes or no answer, how about we start our staff coming back to instruct our kids in tents or schools? I'd like to know that.
So when is your?
I'd like to see that.
Okay, fine. We're working on that, actually. So it's really difficult to be suddenly told we can't go in the buildings, though, because that kind of actually defines whether or not, what happens in the negotiations. So.
Starting back when I closed the buildings and then reiterated on August 4th, because I saw these plans unfolding, I was very clear that the buildings were closed at least to December 1st until we knew that they would be safe for occupancy due to circulation. This is not new. It's an extension of a standing order with the same criteria.
And when is your RFQ process going to unfold so that we would have any more information from this, from whichever?
We are working on the RFQ now. We have all the data to put it out, and we hope to be on COMS-BY within a week.
So can you take the next couple steps, though, out there so we have better understanding?
I mean, the bids, it's out there for 10 days, depending on how the bids come out. The companies who have approached and expressed interest are, you know, ready to go. But it, it depends on the quality of the bids. I mean, we'll do this as fast as we can.
Could the high school be the first one so that we would at least have the one that we think is the easiest to pass be the first one to look at? So that they could use special populations first?
Allison, do you have these occupancy numbers? And I guess I'm also trying to get some clarity, like, do we need to be calling parents and saying, "Actually, we can't have special populations in," or is there some way to schedule them across the length of the week to meet those occupancy levels as they are currently mandated?
I'm unclear if the mayor is talking, are you talking about the 25% occupancy?
Yes.
From the Board of Health? Yeah, yeah. So, I mean, our buildings hold about 500, you know, 400, 500 people. So, you know, we might have 50 people in there right now. So, you know, we're, we're within our occupancy limits in our buildings. If we add students at the high school, which is our largest occupancy building, we're only talking about those special populations right now, which I think Sarah gave you the numbers for that.
I think it was 56?
A hundred and.
Fifty-two.
Hundred, hundred and eight students altogether, and I, then at least.
I think we'll be fine. You know, I, yeah, yeah. And, and we, the plans, Bree and Maggie Heber have been part of the, the discussions. Like, if I have occupancy questions, I've been. have been part of the, um, the discussions. Like, if I have occupancy questions, I've been asking them and they've, they've been very helpful. So I think we're, I think we're, we're not having a challenge with that. The same thing with the 50 pace and we're within our occupancy levels upstairs there in our offices.
Um, around this topic, I don't, I, and I'm fine if it's tabled to another meeting, but because it just came out. But on August 28th, um, EEC and DESI, uh, put forward the care options for hybrid and remote learning models. And I I was, um, wondering what our department's response to that is. And well, understanding, they just came out on August 28th and they look at the pods and and, um, also using EEC facilities for after-school or care during the school day. Um, I don't know if it helps or hurts or confusing, confuses what we're talking about now. Um, you know, but I I've just kind of food for thought.
Yeah, no, it it's a good question. I mean, I think one of the downsides in our community is, you know, we don't have like a local Y. I think, you know, that's been, that's been hard for us. The Champions Program we have in our buildings, they've provided before and after-school care. But having the concerns that we did around the buildings and knowing that this committee voted not to have children go into the buildings for the start of the school year, I couldn't wrap my heads around having children go into the building for childcare for the whole space.
Absolutely.
Um, our message to the Champions Program was, we would love to have your services.
Yeah.
We can't operate them in our buildings. If there's any way you can operate them someplace else in our community, we would love to work with you to do that. Um, that's our, that's been our challenge. You know, there's not a, there's not a lot of, um, options in the community for, um, our students. And without having the green light to provide any of these services in the schools, I I, you know, it's, it's not, I don't want to say it's not a school issue because obviously these are our children, but I think this is a city issue, you know, to, we need some ways to support our families in the community, in community.
Right. I mean, to to be able to partner with EEC licensed facilities already who have operated through emergency care, you know, a lot of those smaller family, you know, childcare after-school, perhaps there's space there. Um, but also with these remote learning pods, the students where it's not quite like homeschool and and those sort of things, I'm not, um, I'm not promoting them, but I I, it sounds like we're, we're going, we're, we're facing them. Um, you know, and I do think it's, it's a city i- issue, even what we're talking now and and thinking about, um, space that that could be appropriate and and safe is always swimming around in my head. But I, I did wonder if the care options using currently EEC licensed space that now can file for an extension for school-aged children, does that help us with some of the programming for special populations? Um, you know, talking to Young World and and, um, all about children or whatnot. And I'm throwing those names off because those are the, the care facilities I know. Second Congregational, what, what does that, what does that space look like? And it might be just, you know, it might go right back to, to what we're talking about now as far as air quality. I, I don't know. I I think it just gives us a little more space to, to look at. And and we.
Follow up. I know that, I know the elementary principals have been reaching out to some of those places. I know, um, I know Jill has talked to Champions. I know Jill, or Dr. Toshia has spoken to, I think it's a congregational church folks. And so she's been talking to some of those groups.
Yeah.
Circle back with the elementary principals and then, um, report back out to this committee. Because I honestly don't know. I mean, I think, you know, um, I wish we had a Boys and Girls Club or a Y or something, you know? I mean, I I look at some of our neighboring communities that that's a perfect, um, perfect tool to expand our services. But unfortunately, we don't have that. So.
No.
Um, before we leave, when we were talking about volleyball and occupancy in the buildings, so are we saying that if we have just the two teams and no spectators, that we would be okay for occupancy or not okay?
Oh, we would be well within occupancy.
That's what I was thinking.
Well over, I think it's over 500.
Right.
I mean, yeah, we're talking, we're talking 60 people, maybe.
And there is not a separate occupancy for the gym specifically?
Right. I don't think so.
I'm sure there is because there is. Right, I mean, including the gym.
But you're still talking tiny numbers for that.
Yeah, so if that's, if that's the threshold, then we're still under 25%. And if that's the threshold that you're saying, Mayor, then we can't have volleyball played in our gym.
Do you meet the occupancy? I'm just saying personally, I wouldn't do it, but I would vote against that.
And that's why we said players have to be volunteer and they have to understand that and all the different steps that we went through previously. So that's, then that clarifies that we can still have volleyball indoors if the players choose to play.
Okay. Anything else? We have, um, if we're done with this, we'll go on to our payroll and accounts. And we ready to go on? All right. Marissa, do you want to do our school payroll?
All right, it came up so much faster than I expected. I have to pull it up here. Normally, it would be another two more hours.
Let's be happy with a shorter meeting.
All right, I'm just getting the agenda out. I'm sorry for being slow here. Okay. All right. I make a motion to approve the school payroll dated 8/27/2020 in the amount of $357,516.13.
Second?
Roll call. Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Mary?
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye.
I move to approve the accounts payable dated 8/27/2020 in the amount of $287,551.21.
Second?
Jonathan?
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Lori?
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor?
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Shannon?
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Marissa?
Marissa Curry, aye.
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Uh, so do we have anything under other? And if not, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn. My second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Jonathan Schmidt, aye.
Lori Garcia, aye.
Mayor LaChapelle, aye.
Marissa Curry, aye.
Sorry, Marissa.
Shannon Dunham, aye.
Mary Goldstein, aye.
Cindy Kuzensky, aye. Thank you, everybody, for attending. Have a wonderful night. Stay safe and be well.
Likewise.
Good night.
Buenas noches.